We actually brought up the idea, hey, why don't we meet with the community on a regular basis? Rather than trying to have just a, hey guys, we want to talk. Notification go out once a quarter or something. Why not make it a regular part of who we are as a board? And not even just now while we're trying to develop our portrait of graduate and some of the work that we're doing, but for the long term. It is informal. This first night is more informational than back and forth. We'd just like to share where we see the time going and some of the things we might need from our patrons in the future. So I'm going to turn it over to Carrie and Stacy and go from there.
All right, well, we were, I will say lucky enough. I felt that I was very lucky. We took a team of six of us to a conference in Arizona. It was about two weeks, two weeks ago or so, and it was put on by the organization called Ad Leader 21. And Ad Leader 21 has been behind the whole Portrait of a Graduate push. I mean, their, their goal is by the year 2020 to have, I want to say, I don't remember, I mean, a large number of districts throughout the country do this work. So when we happened, when we were there, they had another, I want to say 60 districts that have gone through the same work that we are looking at going down, or that we have already, I should say, looking that we have actually started. So what, I guess one thing that I'd say is, and I know we might talk about this with the board, but we each had, myself, Stacy, Mr. Beecher, we were able to have two school board members go, which is wonderful because you need, we need to make sure that we're all having an understanding of what this work is. So Deb and Kim, and then Mike Danielson was also able to go too. So not only was it about the sessions that we attended, for me, one of my takeaways was that, that we're doing the right, that we're really going down the right road, that we saw and heard from districts that are in similar places that we are. You know, we're, our test, I mean, we've got great test scores, we've got great kids, but how are we making sure, how are we going to make sure that we are giving feedback to our kids on, I hate to say the word soft skills, but you know, those executive functioning skills, accountability, I'm talking outside my head, but those, you know, our communication, collaboration, although, how do we, how are we giving our students feedback on that? And what's the work that we need to do to get there? And so what we were able to do was, was hear from other districts their stories of the road that they've gone down to do this work. So that, that to me was my takeaway. I guess what was, how would you share your takeaway?
I think the one thing, as Carrie said, there's lots of districts across the country that are doing this work right now, and specifically even in our state, we've already seen some, some of the more finished products from Weston Wayne and Earlham and Van Meter, and so we know there's, and Johnston. And so my takeaway is, as they had districts that were sharing their story and where they've come from, they were very much districts like us. So they weren't districts who were getting cited by their Department of Education as being failing schools. These were really high functioning schools that, you know, I kind of just, like I said, yep, that's Gilbert right there when they're talking. And so my takeaway was, yep, this is the right work and this is definitely work we need to do, but my same, in the same vein, it's very difficult to change when you're already really high functioning and you're doing great things and you're getting good results. So ultimately, my takeaway, I had gone to a session, if you've read the book, and I've literally had this book on my shelf for a couple of years, and so it was great to go to a session and have somebody give me the Cliff Notes since I hadn't actually read it yet. But it was a switch, and it's really about how to change when change is hard. And so that, my takeaway there was really about, as we're coming, we have great plans and great aspirations as a board and as administrative team, but how we're not doing all this change and just having, you know, the 1,400 kids we have just, you know, trailing around behind us, or the 150 staff members just, you know, dragging them along for the ride, how to make sure that they're part of that change as well. And really, to me, that's building the case for why, and why are we doing this work? And so that's really.
Mike, did you want to share yours?
And I think the why is a big takeaway for me. So I visited with people from three districts, one in New York, one in Connecticut, and one in Michigan that have been through this, and they were there presenting in different capacities, and the amount of time that they took, you know, and they all pretty much said it was something that you have to do right, and you have to be planful in your approach because if you can't get the buy-in, if you can't really communicate the why, then it's, you know, it's really hard to move forward. And, you know, it's kind of like you only get one bite at the apple. And so I think for me, it just said, you know, maybe slower is better in some sense, you know, to really be, take the time to have a good plan and move forward and, you know, because like I said, just as you talked to some of those districts, when they laid out the course that they went, you know, that seemed to be what I, I would ask them, so what have you learned from this, what would you do differently or whatever? And that's what a lot of them said is, take the time to do it right. You know, don't rush it just to get it done and say you have it. It's got to be good and it's got to mean something, and so take the time and do it right.
Mike, how would you articulate the why?
Well, I think, you know, we, I, my short elevator speech is, we don't want to be blockbuster video. That's what we talked about. We sat on the patio one night and we talked, and blockbuster video was the greatest, what they did, but they didn't adapt to the change, to the changing times, you know? They had a chance to buy Netflix and they didn't see it as important, and they didn't, and by the time they did, it was too late, right? So we're the best at what we do, but the times are changing, and so we've got to change with them. We've got to innovate and adapt. And so I think that would be my elevator speech, is we don't want to be blockbuster. We don't want to be the best at what we did and it's something that's no longer important.
That's really interesting that you asked that question, John, because we, as, as the group of six, one of the things that we came away with is, what is our why? And do we all have the same elevator speech? Because that's key. And then we brought that same thing, we brought that same exact question back to our administrative team. What do, what do each of us think the why is? And is it the same? Because the work that pushes forward, that elevator speech and that why for all of us has to be, we all have to be working towards the same target. And there can be some variation in parts and pieces of it, but not in the why. The why is key to what we're doing. I don't know, Kim and Deb, if you two wanted to add anything to that?
Go ahead.
Can I just, I was going to say, just to tack on to what Carrie's saying, so our PD on Wednesday really is going to be working on the why with staff, and I know, hopefully they'll come to understanding that, so we're going to talk about how the world of work is changing, and then ultimately how we have to change to meet that. So the why will be the focus of a lot of our work on Wednesday.
And part through that conversation, because I think that we've, we have felt that we've done some of that already, but one thing that we maybe as, as we look at professional development, because we don't have, I mean, especially when we've been together as a whole district and done this work, we've had parts and pieces, little bits of time along the way, and when we come back to it and we have such little time, it's almost like we do the opposite of what we know is the right, we spoon feed some of that. And I don't mean that against our teachers at all. Our teachers are working hard at everything that they do, but we feel like our amount of time with them is so short that instead of giving them that time to really dig and to think about it, we're just saying, this is, okay, watch this video, and oh, yep, we all agree, that's the why, but really, how does that fit for us? What does that mean for us? And instead of us saying, this is the why, we all have to come to that, we, as a collective, we've got to really dig into that. And so that's exactly where, because that doesn't mean the work that we've done previous to this is gone, because it's not. We've got, we've got, but, but we need to come, we need to do this, we need to come back, really come back to the beginning and then look at the work we've done and say, okay, how does this work match? The work that we did last year on the Portrait of a Graduate work, not that it's not bad work, it's good work, but how does, what is there any tweaking that we need to do as we look at this to make sure that it matches what our why is? So I don't know, I'm sorry.
And just to back up real quick before Deb talks or before we go any farther, Portrait of a Graduate really is an initiative that looks at our, what, what we collectively as a district, parents, staff, administrators, school board, students, think that student should know and, and who they can be when they graduate. But, but it's not just looking at our senior year, it's going from preschool and identifying our values as a district and carrying those values all the way through, so that when they graduate, every student hopefully walks away with, with a piece of each of those things. And at this point in time, we're calling them words. Really what they are is our values, but now this is where we're at the point where Carrie and the administrative team have been identifying the staff and the administrative team and the board's values and what we think our students should be. Now is the time where we're looking to reach out to the community. Parents, what do you think? Students, what do you think? Business members, what do you think? Because quite frankly, our children have to work for somebody someday, and so.
Well, yeah, our, is what, what we say that we think is important, going back to what Mike said, the world that we live in is vastly, is changing, and we want to make sure that that matches. And so we actually are meeting with the Ames Chamber next week, next, Thursday maybe, to get some feedback from, from them on that. And we've done some of that previously, but this is really, we did it as a whole collective consortium where this is really tailored to our, to our community. So, okay.
Oh, no, I think I would be interested in a lot of what you guys said. For me, it was a chance to interact with a lot of people from so many different school districts. And I think that maybe as a new, a newer board member, I think some things became really clear to me about maybe the role of the board in this process and what we can do and, and maybe the path we can, you know, blaze in a wheel, but not wait for that. That is much more clear to me now, having spoken to so many folks who have done this. There's a, there's a right way to do it, as they've said, and that, that was so helpful. I think then the other thing was, this isn't a right turn for our district, right? I mean, we're not all of a sudden going straight and then hooking right or left or whatever, but we're just, it's, it's the next step. We need to keep moving. All of these districts have found something that works for them, and it isn't like a one shoe fits all solution. Here, just go plop this in and make this work in your district. It's a, there's options. There's things that I think that it opens up doors, and I was very, it was energizing, I guess, for lack of a better word to, to be around that.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So we've been involved in at least a couple of meetings in terms of, is it SIA?
Yeah, that's right.
You know, looking at these words and things like that. So from a parent's perspective, I mean, you guys, you're living it every day, you understand it, hopefully comprehensively and completely, even though there might still be some gray areas. And I like the why in terms of what Mike was saying, but from a parent's perspective, I would want to know, I mean, what is the end result? Where do we need to be and how do we get there? And I think that's important to communicate to the parents because that might get them more engaged into this process. Because if it just stays as an exercise, and you guys know all the terminology and the process, and we, you know, we just go to a meeting and say, oh, you know, link these words or define these words or these terms, I don't think that would be meaningful. We need to know, you know, you guys are involved in every step of the way, we want to know what the outcome is so we can get engaged. So when, when you're thinking about the whys, I would also like, would like you to think of, you know, what is this going to look like? And how, you're going to figure out how to get there, hopefully with involvement from everybody, but what is that getting there going to look like?
What? Oh, okay.
I was just going to say, I would hope Omar, that what we're looking at is, that when we look at Portrait of a Grad, that's going to be our North Star. That's going to be our direction of where we're going to go for our district and what that's going to look like. And that could open us up to a lot of different things, but one of those things is going to be, what is our mission for this district and how will that be, how will that take place? And I think that I had the opportunity to go out with the group, and they had a kickoff meeting for superintendents the very first day. So I was in a room with districts of 35,000 and about 300, and you know, we're not, we're not 35,000, we're in the middle of this, but my point was that all of these people, they were talking about, when you talk about Portrait of a Grad, it's, it's the ability to define what your district is about, and you get that input from a wide variety, and that helps you to go ahead and set up some things that might be like that mission or vision statement.
From there, you, I, if we feel as a community, not just as an administrative team or as school board, but as a community, we say, our students in this new, I don't even want to say 21st century, because we're beyond that now, but if you think of how fast our road is changing, what do we need to do, not content wise, but through that work? What do we need to do, what kind of feedback do we need to give students so that they, that we know that they're ready for that next stage of whatever that next stage is for them when they leave us as 12th graders? Some of them are going to go into the workforce, some of them are going to go to a four-year college, some of them are going to go to a trade school, but we need to know, we need to, we need to give them as much as possible so that they can be prepared, not just to take a test, but they are prepared for whatever that next step in life is. So if we say, I'm just going to pick the word communication, we say, you know what, communication in this day and age is key. And that's what we, you know, as a community, we, that's one of our pieces to that North Star. What does that look like as a preschooler? And what does that look, what does that mean to be a good, to be a good communicator? What does that mean as a preschooler all the way to a senior? The elementary, the elementary will be laying the foundational work for that, because regardless of what your age is in the elementary, we're all communicating in some form and fashion. But as they move forward, that's going to become, it's going to become more intricate as they move forward in their, in their school, in their school career. So we have to define where is that happening and when are we physically teaching that? Just because we say, line up, zero, you know, this is a zero level, how are we actually teaching that? And then, how are we giving students feedback on that? Yes.
And how are you communicating this to the parents?
That's exactly correct.
The north point, how are you going to get the parents involved and get that north point and communicate all this to?
Well, ultimately, this is.
This is part of it.
This is part of it.
Here.
And so I think from there, really, you know, obviously, we're very informational tonight, kind of telling you kind of the backstory and where we've been and what we're doing, you know, moving forward, but ultimately, our goal is to get your feedback and things. And I get your point in that the end goal, but it's not for us to create the end goal. We can kind of create the end vision of what we really are going to have in the end as a, you know, a strategic plan that will then, all of our decisions, whether it's the instructional decisions we make for kids, but it's also our, all of our decisions can be based on that, does it fit within those things that we say are ultimately important?
And if it doesn't, then we have to reevaluate. If that doesn't fit our plan, is it what we want to be doing?
And I think over the next few months and probably the next couple of years, our intent is to bring a lot of parents and a lot of, of community members and business people to the table. As it is, we're all busy, but we frequently hear from, from just a small group, just a small percentage of our parent population when, when we ask the question. And so we're going to try and provide times, this one being the first opportunity, you know, every, every school board meeting night, you know, 5:30 we're going to meet. And typically, it'll be exercises, it won't just be chatting. We'll have something that we're ready to gather information on, and hopefully we could fill 20 or 30 seats and we can, we can pose this question and have great conversation. And it's really, as the six of us talked, we'd like to see every person in the district have the opportunity to come to the table at some point during this, this plan. You know, I mean, this is an evolutionary thing, it won't be done this year.
Yeah, there's just five of us here.
Right.
And to get that, I didn't even know this was going to be an open forum, which we've already gone through all the eight minutes. I'd like to get some words in before this ends, this conversation, but to get the communication out to all the parents that you guys are discussing this somehow, not just, you know, flipping it up at the last minute. So maybe you'll get more input either emails because they can't make us, because they're all busy, not interested.
A question I would ask, and I think I will, I will speak for Duan Omar, because they're very good at attending some hard things, but like, what as a parent would help in, what, because we've put information out for like school improvement advisory, you know, getting people to come, what do you think would help to get more people involved?
Just like you did with the bond, simple advertisement. Simple advertisement at different stations around the school. Hey, this is what we're discussing, this North Star program, this is what, we'd like some input. Email us at this or come to the 5:30 meetings that are now available, and maybe you'll have to move to a different, you know, to a gymnasium.
Jim, do you think that, you know, one of the things that we did with the bond was we did forums, do you think, and that's kind of what we're trying to do here, do you think that that would be something that people would come out to? I mean, we're, we're, no. Go ahead, talk.
I think they all want to hear what's going on.
Right.
And, and they'll communicate, I think more people would come to some forums, but even those weren't attended, you know, by a great number. But I think everybody wants to know, and everybody talks about it a lot more when you see it on those nice signs you put out, hey, this is what we're doing at each school. Oh, this is great. Because there's so much, you know, rumors going on, which will lead me into my, my question with five minutes left, if I may, just jump into it.
Please.
I like to talk about lights and dirt. So the lights here at the stadium, at this school, about a year ago, we were all in on planning meetings, and we were told utilities cut the lines, they're not sure where the lines were cut, and so we're just waiting for, you know, you guys get in touch with their insurance company, have them cover the cost of replacing the lines so we get the lights up. So we've gone a whole school year so far without the north lights working, and then the south lights went out this last week, and then we were told that it wasn't, it was just rotted lines on the north end and that we would need a new $10,000 transformer that wasn't in the budget. So it's kind of like, what happened to the utility company doing something wrong and not fixing it, to now we're saying they're just old lines and we're not fixing the, the north end? And also, all the recreation stuff has to be on this end, and now the lights went out completely. So what's the real story? When are they going to get repaired? Who's paying for it?
Real story, yeah, can I go ahead and speak? Real story, real story is this, last year, we had a situation where the line that goes from the transformer that's out here over to the transformer that's just north, excuse me, just east of the bleachers, there was a, something that happened to the line. So what happened was, they came in as far as Alliant and just kind of put that to the side and didn't, didn't do anything with that. And what we found out was, we got back up and we were able to have, we were not able to have school in this building on that day. What they did was, they found out that the wires that we have underneath the ground are old and they need to be replaced. So what we did was, we went, worked with Burns Electric and Alliant to bring in, from the transformer out here, to bring into the building, a new set of lines that will be taken care of. What we're doing is, and I talked to, when we did that, we knew that we would only have half of the, the field as far as to be lit. One of the things that I did was, I talked to Mr. Pizzetti, I talked to Mr. Lunt, and they set it up so that they could continue to play. What we need to do now is, we need to see what's going to happen with the line that we have there, if we're going to go ahead and bring that around and repair that. We have a transformer that's over there that, I don't know how much that will cost to replace, I've seen better days. So what has happened is, during this particular season, they played on half of the field with half of those lights. And what we need to do is, we need to go ahead and see what will be the next step, if we will go ahead and add that to the, the north end there and see if we can get that repaired.
So did the utility companies hit the line like you guys told us?
I don't know who told you that, but that isn't true.
Well, who was in the planning, I think you did.
No, I never told anyone that. Those lines, that line was, was, the situation on that line was, there was a break in that line, and what they did was, they just disconnected that and they ran everything through to get us through to the end of the school year. And then actually, after the school year, we had two times where the breaker on that pole popped and brought us down. So we knew we had to do something. So what we did was, we went ahead and directionally bored into the parking lot and back into the school to repair that for right now. And that's basically on an insurance claim.
So were the two sets of lights, the north end and the south end, on separate transformers before that all happened?
They were, I, they, the north end was on that same transformer that's right out here by the road.
Okay. And which is still here?
Which is still there.
Okay, so it's just, so if that's still.
But what has to happen is, if that's going to be able to work, that, that whole line has to be repaired that goes out to the transformer that's by that little shed, and we got to see if that transformer by the shed is even worth using.
Okay, but we haven't looked into seeing if it's worth using, we just.
No, we have not.
We decided it was a $10,000 cost to replace it, and that's something we wanted to.
I don't know that it's $10,000, because the one that we, we have right next to the school is a lot more than that.
Okay, so timeline?
I would say that we would have a timeline that would allow us to go ahead and have a decision made by spring of this year. The thing that you have to realize is, that when we look at that field as far as use for lights, there are not very many activities that are using lights on that field.
Well, I understand. I simplify football.
And that's why, that's why one of the things that I thought that we hopefully had set up was that, and I think Graham did a nice job of setting that up, using half the field.
Yeah, they were skinnier fields, but the other, the people who came in from out town knew that. A question for you, because it's all, almost all rec at night and not school activities, right? We don't do any tracking thing out here.
No.
Would you be up for a fundraiser from the rec department to raise funds for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Second, second quick question, the mountain of dirt at the high school. I've heard things that, you know, sooner or later, you know, when we bring in the baseball facilities, we actually will have to pay to get that dirt all the way. Is it black dirt? Does anybody know? Is it topsoil? And?
It's not, it's not white dirt.
It's a clay, it's a clay type of dirt. It's not good, like black dirt, like you would go out in a farm field and find.
It's not topsoil.
It's fill, right?
If it was, that would be worth a gold mine there.
Because I'm, yeah, I was just thinking, you know, the elementary city fields, the little league soccer, it's all over been on a, you know, big slate, and maybe even use that as a base to bring it up and then bring some topsoil, or scrape the topsoil off with there, put that down, put the topsoil back on.
One of the things that we were required to do legally from a school standpoint is, when we do something like dirt, we have to go ahead and put that out in a public hearing and then people have to bid on that. And that's, that's what we did.
Okay. Oh, so it's been bid on?
There was no bidders.
Okay.
There was an offer. $1. Now if you can get it to that field, it's yours. And I'll move it.
It's the move.
So is it okay, I mean, is it still an option to move some of that dirt over to the?
I think, and I've been, I've talked a little bit with John Pop as has Lindsay and our, our grounds director, and I think one of our issues, A, we're not opposed to it, I mean, I'd love to make that field never be wet, as it is sometimes in that low area, but I think it's just trying to figure out, it's not just as simple as adding the dirt, there's a lot of tiling that has to happen.
Oh, sure.
You know, I'll use Kathy Anderson and Sean Anderson where they live, because already it kind of tilts their, to their direction, their house, so I don't think they're going to want us to do too much, it's going to raise it too much, without a lot of significance. So I think it's just figuring out how much that's all going to cost, because it's not a matter of just moving the dirt over. But, so I think it's just putting it, and then also, all the work they just did on the baseball fields, what's that going to do? And the baseball and softball that are right there, raising that up, how does that impact those fields?
Yeah, I'm talking about next to the parking lot, the, just the little league fields, the little soccer.
The one that John Pop's been working on with me is the one south.
It's got a ditch all the way around it.
Oh, the one he's talking about with me is the one south of the school.
You're talking about the one west, right?
The one I'm talking about is basically northwest.
You're talking about the city side.
And it's plants like this, it's always the worst.
The city side.
I mean, I'm past that stage, but I don't want to leave the parents, you know, we all ranted about it 10 years ago.
Yeah.
For the sake of time, is this possible, is this something we're both on the, like the fundraiser for the electrical lights out there and for the dirt that we could, like, I don't know, you guys can meet separately? I just want to be really careful for the timing for this, except a piece of it all. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's all right. We ran out of time, I just thought this was a, you know, back and forth forum, so I thought.
And I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you about that, if we want to do some planning with that, as far as a fundraiser, or if we want to do, I know, one of the things, and I'll make it very, very quick, one of the things right now is, we have that $14 million bond project, and we're trying to see where we're at with that and what we're going to be able to do and not do. So that's. So, uh, that's, that's a pretty high priority right now. Not to say that the other one is.
Oh, no, no, we're, we're, we're finalizing the season right now, this week anyways, but, uh, yeah, for next year, we'd love to get things lined up.
And one of the things, Jim, that we talked about was trying to get, like, the city, and, I don't know if they call it park and rec here, and the school together, and just sitting down and seeing what needs to happen in some of these areas, and trying to get some future planning there.
Oh, that'd be great.
So, thank you.
Yeah. Have you guys ever considered bringing park and rec under the school umbrella?
Ooh. Can we? I have no idea. That sounds like no.
I just don't know if we, if we can.
We just don't know, we have to find that out.
Yeah, regardless of that, like, just a, a higher collaboration would be killer on that stuff. Even, I mean, regardless of how it all, I mean, it's just more conversation around that stuff would be great.
Okay. All right, thank you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Since we haven't started.
Yeah, I just want to add, just going back, jumping back to how do you get people to come? I think communication is key to actually advertise the event, I think the first I heard about it was on Friday night, when Kim posted it on the mom's page.
Yeah.
And, um, as of, I want to say, like, as of last week, when I last checked the calendar, the board meeting wasn't even on the calendar. So, I mean, it's one of those things, if you want people to come, they have to know about it.
Yeah.
So that would be.
It was a last minute decision, and we just wanted to be able to get as many people as we could here to tell them what our plans were, and then, moving forward, they'll be, we've got, hopefully lots of marketing plans.
And maybe like, consider maybe something like Monkey Survey, or Google to get, to have people just to kind of like, get their input back, you know, whether you're using those keywords, or what's important, or, for goals, or, you know, that type of feedback.
Right.
The other thing I'd suggest too, is take to three or four minutes of video, where you, three or four, we're, we're talking about, here's where we want to go, and say, if you want to see the complete video, here it is, but here's the highlight, because nothing works like, like email video, people are pretty good about texting email.
Yeah.
Since we still didn't start the meeting, and you're already late, I think, I think it's still important, and I'll, I'll echo what I said last year at board meeting, to have a community time where people can talk, like the gentleman in the background. And so, I hope, you know, those 30 minutes are not all going to be taken by surveys, and you guys sharing information with us, that there will still be some back and forth questions, discussion, items that need to be discussed, I think that's still very important. And hopefully we'll get more parents to talk this issue.
I appreciate that, thank you Omar. All right, I'm going to start the meeting before anyone else. So, the first thing, uh, for 6:00 PM, is we have, um, a public hearing on the proposal, updated plan, specifications in form of contract, and estimated cost of bid for reissuance 01, uh, for the Gilbert Middle School and High School additions, renovations, and site improvements, and for that, we need to officially have a roll call.
Ryan.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Kim, here.
John.
Here.
And Deb, here.
All right, excellent, we are all here, uh, so this is the start of the public input on proposal, updated plan, specifications, and forms of contract, and everything I just had said previously around the Gilbert Middle School and High School additions. Um, this is a public forum to, um, have, uh, any public input, and then also, do we get to hear, sorry, I'm sorry about this, do we get to hear anything on this?
Yeah, that's what we're, that's why we're here, to see if there's any public input on the reissuance of those, uh, those bids.
Excellent, yeah, as, as you all know, so maybe you don't know, uh, we had a round of bidding last week regarding, uh, three reissued, um, bidding opportunities, and got the results back. Is there any public input on this? All right.
President closed the meeting.
So I will, I'm going to adjourn the public hearing.
6:05.
All right.
Having a motion?
Summons.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, stands approved. Thank you, now moving into, oof, ahead of time, uh, the agenda there for the regular school board meeting, and we'll start that off again. Do we need a second roll call for this?
Uh, no, that's okay.
All right. Would anyone like to approve the agenda?
We'll approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda here. Opening this up, we have the public forum, first I'm going to ask if the kids' club, people would like to speak first, and then if any patrons, uh, after that, would like to talk.
Okay, thank you.
Lily.
Okay. Stand over here. All right, so I'm starting with letters, and this is Nicole Schrader, and some of you know us, must be a few familiar faces here. Um, so, for those who, um, might not know, we supervise the elementary kids club program and the intermediate kids club programs here, so, um, uh, you know, kids club is a before and after, or, an after-school program, provided, provided by YSS, and we're a non-profit organization that's connected to the Gilbert School District, you all know this. So our program runs from the time the kiddos are out of school, until 6 o'clock every night, Monday through Friday, um, and we're open on those planned early out days, uh, no school days, and over winter break as well, to help families out. Um, so our goal is really to, um, help the families in the community and make, uh, you know, after-school care affordable for them. So, uh, actually, this year, um, we, uh, added part-time as well, like, part-time fees as well as full-time fees, so parents can kind of pick and choose, and we still have a regular drop-in fees as well, um, and we have, you know, families who use, um, DHS assistance, we accept all of that, we have different levels based on income and household, um, size as well, for our families. So that's just a little bit about kind of what we do. At the elementary school, we serve a total of 58 children, 39 of them are part-time and full-time, and 19 drop-in. Um, here at the intermediate school, um, we have about 55 children, 31 part-time, full-time, and 24 drop-in.
Um, the goal of our program is to provide just a safe place for the kids to be after school, because research tells us that, um, the after-school hours between 3:00 and 6:00 PM are usually the peak hours for juvenile crime, and also experimentation with cigarettes and alcohol and drugs, um, and we just want to provide an opportunity for families to have their children in a safe environment, and it's really handy, also, it's, uh, out on the school grounds, so their kids don't even have to go anywhere after school, they just stay on the school grounds until parents can come get them. One of, another thing that families seem to really, really enjoy about our program is we have a lot of volunteers and, um, visitors that come, that we partner with, so, for instance, we partner with America Reads, America Counts tutors that I, from Iowa State, um, and then we provide free tutoring opportunities for all of the children in our program after school. Uh, we've heard lots of really good things from teachers and families about that program. Uh, we have, uh, the scouts program has volunteered to do like, an outreach program once a week, like, girl scouts come.
Yeah.
And then over the summer, we also have, um, foster grandparents that come to visit and spend time with the children. Um, so we really, uh, we really love all of the partnerships and volunteers we get. Um, and the reason we're here tonight is to invite all of you to our open house, which will be on Wednesday, October 24th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, and it'll be right here in the cafeteria, um, of the intermediate school, and we will be serving a taco bar dinner, and then we invite the families to kind of join in a potluck, so the families bring lots and lots and lots of goodies.
Yes.
Um, so there'll be lots of yummy food. We also do drawings for prizes, we have games, um, you can win family night, family fun night baskets, um, but, yeah, we would like to invite you cordially, and invite you to come enjoy some yummy food. We have, well, I have some packets of information for the board members, so there's some statistics in here, and then there's also statements from our families, which we really enjoy. And then I'm going to leave some handmade, beautiful, um, invitations for the rest of you all, leave them right over here, so you can grab them on your way out, and if any of you can make it, that'd be awesome, and we're looking forward to hopefully seeing you. All right, so anyone have any questions about our program before we leave? Yes?
Growth in numbers, or what, over the past years, and then space, I'd just be curious, what your numbers have been, and how you are for space adequacy?
Yes, so, at the elementary school, our kind of home base where we keep all of our things is one of the portables, um, that's behind the school. That portable, so we're licensed by DHS, is only licensed for 30 children, just because of the size and how many bathrooms are in there. Um, so, the way I get around that, because obviously there's more than 30 children that want to be in the program, is, I start the program in the cafeteria, and then we split into two groups, and we kind of rotate, so we're making it work, um, obviously, you know, if we could make the portable bigger somehow, that'd be great, but, I don't see that happening. Um, so we make it work though, because we are, we are allowed, I mean, Stacy lets us use the cafeteria, or the commons area, and the gym, and the portable, so we kind of just break up into smaller groups and try to make it work as best we can. Serena's program has been growing exponentially, so yeah, space is a big issue, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so, I have that old home ec classroom down the hall, it's very, very loud, so I can have up to like, 25 people in there, total.
Do you want 25?
No, and it's, it really affects a handful of my kids, they're just, the noise level, there's nothing I can do, and we're, you know, we should be a fun program and stuff. So, um, we've been working with Tim, and I think Graham Lund as well, to help out, um, you know, so we have the east gym as well, to utilize the space, so we set up currently, um, we need to talk, I'll email you some, more details on that, but, uh, currently, we set up in, um, in the east gym, a couple tables, have centers out there, and then like, an active area for the kiddos, and then, um...
But the issue we run into is?
Yeah, like, I mean...
It's not always available, right?
Yes, yeah, it's not always available, and lately it has been, which has been great, but it's not always available, because you guys need to use up for practices and stuff like that, um, and then, uh, my numbers, I, I was thinking, you know, by 4:30, I was, usually our numbers are lower, but it's more like 5 o'clock where we start dropping. Um, so, that's kind of, um, been the main issue, so right now I'm playing around with that, and then, I mean, I just kind of reach out to, to Tim and, and Amy, uh, you know, Amy's worried about letting us...
If we could find a permanent solution, that would be great. And the reason that she needs extra space is because since you started, what, three?
Yeah, well, when we both started, yeah, it's our fourth school year.
There was maybe like, 15 kids in the program, and it's over 30 now, so she's doubled her numbers, and, especially on early out and no school days, when we have those other drop-in families that also need care.
Yep, so, um, but yeah, so that's a big thing, and...
Let us know when you come up with a solution.
Yeah. Like, selling with basketball starting up will be, um, you know, be a little tougher, but I think I'll reach out to Amy and use the cafeteria when needed, and, you know, split up that way as well, so, that's kind of the plan, and I got a new job as well, just so everyone knows, so I will be leaving kids' club, um, probably the beginning of November, so, just, I don't know.
So still with YSS?
Yes, I'll, so with YSS, I'll be a volunteer coordinator there, but, just so you guys are aware as well, um, something that I kind of want to get figured out before I leave, um, but yeah, so, thank you for that question.
Yeah, well, thank you. And any recommendations you guys have or work out?
One of the things that we're looking at is when the, um, middle school fitness room is done, slash wrestling room, the weight room here.
I probably go with that, so I was wondering, would that space alone be enough for?
For when the, probably the gym's not available, if they have two different spots to put kids.
Both, SCC LA and there, all those.
Take a little muscle and elbow grease, get that room ready for today.
Yeah.
Good? Yeah, thanks, Jim.
All right. Well, thank you for letting us speak, and hope to see you on Wednesday, the 24th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, is there anybody else here who would like to speak, uh, as part of our public forum? All right, in that case, we can move on to our oral reports, starting with the 2018 and 19 district goals. Um, Lindsay, do you want to talk at all about, about this, or, I know that Kim has prepared some things as well?
Well, she's getting some too. Well, she's getting some things set up, are you going to plug in and project? Uh, one of the things that we talked about is trying to make sure that, uh, our goals are very clear, that, uh, maybe the board team and the superintendent have one group, and they're, they're trying to get these, this information in our administrative team, not to say that they're functioning, uh, separately, but to make sure that they are, um, out there and, and functioning together. I know Deb and I are working on trying to get, uh, some people in, uh, to help facilitate, and, uh, there's about three names that we have, and we're, uh, working hard to get that done also.
Excellent.
Oh boy.
Yeah.
She's good, she's good.
Oh, okay. Is it plugged all the way in? It looks like it's almost pulled out right there.
We didn't try to run this. Um, okay, so, I'll just kind of kick off here, um, as some of you who were here earlier heard about, Deb and I had the opportunity to go to Arizona and participate in the ELEADER 21 conference, and, um, it really gave us an opportunity to, um, talk, but we had the opportunity to talk to some of the board members, as they moved through, um, dis, you know, district priorities and annual goals, and it gave us time as a group to have some conversations about, um, where we, nice, thanks, guys.
Awesome.
Yeah, I don't, I'm here, I'm just gonna...
Bottom right by the zoom. Maleus.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Right.
All right, so, um, I, not being, this isn't what I do, okay? I am a burger flipper and a gym owner, and, um, and so, please pardon my, um, attempt at a PowerPoint here, but, um, Gail, if we can just move to the next one. As you know, um, we have been trying to communicate a little bit more with the district, and as we come up with our school district goals, and our priorities every year, we've been trying to get those out into the buildings and communicate. As you can see, these are the last three years. Um, we changed the wording a little bit from 1516 into 16171718, but, you can see that the board's priorities, highlighted in red, are high academic standards, or 21st century learning, a safe and quality learning environment, moving into strategic resourcing, supporting the vision, and leadership and growth, and a culture of continuous learning. I think those are evolutions, um, and they suited our purpose at the time. Okay, move on. My ELEADER 21 takeaway was that districts who are hitting it out of the ballpark have established clear duties and expectations that allow them to do greater things than they ever dreamed possible. If we move on to the next slide. As I'm flying home, taking pictures out the window, because I don't remember who I was sitting next to, I started thinking, are we as a board and a district engaged from 30,000 feet? That's where our priorities lie. Or, next, are we in the trenches? Are we visionary, or are we prescriptive? Are we collaborative leaders, or are we top-down managers? And I don't want anyone to really answer those questions, they're just things for us to talk about. So, Deb and I had an opportunity on our last day to really sit and have a conversation about our role as director, as, on the board of directors. Um, and how the water's really been muddied, um, for a long time. We, as the board, have been really hands-on in the goal-setting, and so what I'd like Or, next, are we in the trenches? Movement? Are we visionary or are we prescriptive? Are we collaborative leaders or are we top-down managers? And I don't want anyone to really answer those questions, they're just things for us to talk about. So Deb and I had an opportunity on our last day to really sit and have a conversation about our role as director, as on the board of directors. And how the water's really been muddied for a long time. We as the board have been really hands-on in the goal setting. And so what I'd like to propose for the board and I'd like to share with the district is, this is kind of the breakdown that we discussed while we were there. Gail, if you could slide over just a little bit, I think I know what it says, but as a board of directors, I feel like our responsibilities are what we expect.
Is there a question there, is it supposed to be see the red? I'm sorry.
Sorry, other way, sorry.
There you go. We, thank you.
So I think, and Deb, jump in here at any time, because this isn't all my gig. As board of directors, I think it's our responsibility to work with the people who elected us, the parents, the patrons of the district, and we should set the expectation. That's where those priorities come in. I think how those things get done, that should be left up to the superintendent and the administrative team. That would come in the form of yearly goals. Who's going to help us? I think we need to expand our reach, just like we talked about at 5:30, we really need to get out there and start involving some of the people who maybe don't feel comfortable coming to the table or don't have time to come to the table, people that we want to hear from, but we haven't always created the opportunity for them to reach out to us. And where will we learn? This got to be a big part of our discussion. We as, as a district need to look outside the typical classroom, you know, we have to look at ISU, DMAT, Kanzakare, internships, online learning, apprenticeships, community service and mentorship programs. One of the things that we heard over and over and over again when we were in Arizona is we're, we as a school system nationwide teach our children how to get into college. That's what we're teaching them. We're not necessarily teaching them how to succeed in college, we're not necessarily teaching them how to succeed in life if they don't want to go to college. And sometimes those kids who maybe aren't college-bound don't always feel great about that decision that they're making. And so it's up to us as a district to start really letting our students make school what's best for them, individualizing it and really leaving here knowing that they can be successful citizens. So how do we do that? If we go to the next one, we have to decide as a board, and, and again, that means our parents and our patrons, what do we expect for the district? That's where this vision and mission work will come in. Next slide. This is an example of, of a school district that Stacy brought to my attention and it's kind of hard to read, but what if our long-range priorities look something like this? Rather than, you know, focusing on 21st century learning, what if goal number one was to provide, I'm trying to read here. Provide relevant, I'm going to go back to my computer.
I can see, I can read.
Can you read it?
Yeah. It says, that one, the example says, provide relevant, rigorous and innovative academics.
Okay, what if goal number two was?
Provide safe, healthy and supportive learning environments.
What if goal number three was?
Okay, this is great, hold on. Attract and support highly effective teachers, leaders and staff.
Goal number four?
Practice effective, efficient and sustainable business practice.
And number five?
Sorry, I'm looking at my exam. Stop this school, family and community engagement.
Not since those should be our goals, but those goals are pretty wide-reaching, right? If we go to the next one, it's another example. Oh, sorry, no, no. It's, yep, you can do it. Number, the next one?
Oh, okay.
It's okay. So what if it was high academic achievement, fiscal responsibility and stability and effective engaging communication? Okay, no matter what, what I'm trying to point out is, no matter what our goals are, these people right here are going to make sure that our students achieve those goals, the priorities of the district, okay? So, moving on, is there any goal that wouldn't fit in any of those priorities? Is there any group of people that wouldn't be represented? And is there anything we couldn't do if our goals were broad, long-lasting and maybe not so prescriptive? So, my next thing, and this is impossible to read. Okay, this is my proposal for board policy 103. It's a policy that we have been working on for three board meetings. Really essentially, it says, every four years, the school board and the superintendent will review the district's long-term priorities. An initial committee will be formed no later than October by a board representative and superintendent to review the mission, vision and high-level district goals to make sure they are still serving the needs of the district. The purpose of this committee would be to develop an initial recommendation to share with the board for preliminary approval. This recommendation should confirm that our high-level priorities are still applicable or provide a plan to modify them as needed. The committee should also provide a list of potential third-party sources to be utilized throughout for needs assessment, gap analysis, to ensure our work aligns with best practices in education. Once this agreement has been reached regarding the integrity of the long-term priorities, the board should employ the resources of the district, including administrators, students, staff, parents and business professionals, to create a list of potential high-level projects that would need to be completed in addition to the educational initiatives currently in place. These priorities should be presented to SIAC no later than February for review. It's important that the long-term priority review be finalized by March to allow adequate time to develop the annual goals for the following year. This is where annual goals come in. Annual goals should be the responsibility of the administrative team. The superintendent and the administrative team will propose new annual goals for the following school year. These goals should be created with the district long-term priorities in mind. The proposed annual goals will be presented to the full board no later than June meeting unless another timeframe has been specified. So with that being said, I'd like the board to really allow or give their blessing to the four goals that have been proposed for this year. I don't feel that the goals are the board's responsibility, I feel they're the administrative team's responsibility and I feel that they've provided us with timelines and SMART goals relating to them. So I'll just let you guys read, because that's big enough.
Are these in our packet?
It might have been, it might have been last meeting, Tyler, I'm sorry. I couldn't get this to download, obviously I don't even know how to run it. So goal number one, they've committed to work through the beginning phases of Portrait of Graduate. It is best practice, as I think they would all tell you. They are in consortiums and they are actively engaged with Ed Leader 21 consultants to do work that will be good for our students. Goal number two would be to continue with our IPI, priority from last year.